But if you put in that. It's a more subtle term.
Restaurants and restaurants. And then people's kind of here with white suit. And I think.
Because like I say, it could be things that already have our.
All of me.
But he, yeah. Budget.
Yeah, we got. Yeah. All right, it is six o'clock. We call the meeting order. Chris, would you call and roll, please?
Rob, Bergen.
Yes.
Mike, Hancock.
Yes.
Brett Eadie.
Yes.
Laura Iverson.
Yes.
Alex Shuka.
Yes.
Renee Philmeyer.
Yes. All right, if you'd stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next item is. Uh, recognition of the open meetings law. The information's on the law. If you have any questions, you can ask. Uh, next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a motion? A second, any discussion? Chris, would you call and roll, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes. Okay, next item is the board minutes of both the March, uh, March regular meeting and the April 4th special meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? So, motions are second?
Second.
Any discussion? Chris, would you call and roll, please?
Is that mine?
Yes, Dean.
Mike.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes. Okay, next item is the approval of the claims. Uh, just one cent, correct?
Oh, I did put the second cent.
Okay. We're going to be next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the claims as presented? Motion is our second? Yep, Mike, any discussion? Chris, would you call and roll, please?
Brett.
Yes.
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes. All right, the next item is the treasurer report. Any questions for the administration on the information presented there? Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, policy review, Brandon, anything? Okay, administrative reports. Ben, we'll start with you.
Good evening, everybody. I got booted from the table, apparently. Oh, wait, there is an empty chair.
I have yours one, too.
Oh, is there? Oh, okay. Sorry. Uh, okay, so my report this month is mostly just about, um, new teacher hires and some of those were just finalized over the weekend, so.
Oh, I see.
Oh, that's right. They've prob- I don't know if Chris would have had time to get them on there. We're just going to do hard copies tonight. So, um, I can kind of talk about these folks now and then again when we, um, when you take motion on some of these hires here if you want. Um, so I think a lot of you probably know that Kim Grazer has been very open about the fact that, um, her family had tentatively planned and now is definitely planning to move to Texas. And so, um, with a couple of the hires that I'm proposing for you to approve this month, um, we actually had discussed, um, the possibility of hiring them when we had had the fourth grade, um, teacher opening. And so the first one of those is Landon Schmidt. Um, I'm asking that you approve Landon to be our fifth grade teacher in his mentor's absence. Um, he comes to us from Wilbur, Platoon, Tonia. He has been a teacher for three years there in fifth grade, is also excited to join Wahoo, um, possibly be a coach if there's an opportunity for that. Um, and so Landon was one of our very top runners when we, um, hired a month ago. And so I talked to him at the time and said, hey, there's about a ninety-eight percent chance that one of our fantastic teachers is going to be moving out of state. Would you be willing to wait around for us? And he said, yeah, I really want to move to Wahoo. I'll absolutely wait. So, um, he actually got approval from his superintendent to wait for us and then as Mrs. Grazer made that decision, um, he is ready to join us. Um, Andrea Parsons, uh, Shelley and I hired for this position together. We're asking that you, um, approve her as a special education teacher. She's been a parent with us for longer than I've been in the district, um, in special education, mostly with Mrs. Eadie. Uh, she'll be student teaching to get her degree in art education in the fall and then would jump in in her full-time permanent special education teacher position, um, in December. Jamie Spalding, um, we are in a position to hire a FTE library media, um, teacher. Stacy Griffiths, uh, has had a fantastic experience here. She has been phenomenal, um, in our library, but she had her firstborn son this full year and decided to be a stay-at-home mom, um, although she had said that she's hoping she admits her husband to move to Wahoo, so her son can go to school here when he's old enough. So, to hire for that position, we, um, are, we had one applicant, but the applicant was outstanding. So Jamie Spalding is looking to join us from Lincoln Public Schools. She's already moved to the area and her daughter will be at Wahoo by next year. Um, Katie Reeves, like Landon Schmidt, was one of our, um, impressive interviewees when we were hiring the fourth grade position. And so I reconsulted with the, um, hiring committee, which included the fourth grade teachers that are returning and Bridget Dobish, um, and we decided to offer her the third grade teacher position, which is open because Curtis Carlson is filling that instructional facilitator spot. Just as a reminder from last month, that position's being created because I'm taking over as the Head Start director and my salary will be offset by the Head Start grant now. So it's, it's a neutral cost of the district there. Um, and then Sherri Anderson, um, I might let Shelley talk a little bit about, more about this one, but, um, Sherri was, um, a candidate that we, um, interviewed who were, uh, recommending fill in as a special education teacher because with Mrs. Greg's resignation, Jordan Forkman, who is currently a special education teacher, but is on a provisional because she does not yet have the endorsement, um, is looking to move in as our next kindergarten teacher. So Sherri would come to us as a fully endorsed and certified special education teacher. She has over twenty years of experience. She taught with Emily Kildner and Betty Kinn as well. I don't know if I'm going to have anything you sure can, but that's my report. Any questions?
Yeah, a question. So is Sherri Anderson, she is, she's got a degree in special education?
Yes.
Andrea Parsons does, too?
Andrea will be on a provisional. Her, she has a, she will have a teaching certificate, but she'll be on a provisional, so she'll finish her special education coursework as she's teaching with us.
So she has, she's just starting? She has not?
She'll be a first-year teacher, yeah. She's been a parent with us in special education for a long time.
Are there any issues with that having, not having a degree in special ed? Now, it'll be the same thing with junior.
So the, yeah.
Shelley was comfortable with that, so.
Yeah. NDE, um, allows them anywhere between one and three years to get the rest of their coursework, um, when they're hired on a provisional, especially in a high-needs area like special ed.
So that's something she will be working on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Ben. All right, thank you. Shelley?
Any questions about any of those hires for special ed? Any other questions? Uh, in my special education report, the only thing I wanted to point out is we will have our non-public meeting, April twenty-seventh, um, at one P.M. It will be at the Union Bay Meeting Room, simply because there's just, and I need to, um, just, of course, there's just not a good, large enough area to meet while at school, uh, without interrupting, uh, school business. So we have moved it there. Um, so that will be, I've sent out invitations to all public school districts that, um, we draw students at Newman, St. Wednesday's and St. John's, and then also to parents of students who are at those non-public schools. This meeting is to look at the grant money we receive and how we want to spend that, the proportionate share that would go to the non-public school. So you are welcome to attend. Brandon will be there. Um, usually we have other districts that have, um, the folks at, um, the non-public schools count and then we usually have a few parents. Any questions about that? And then nothing really new for Head Start. We will approve the Head Start calendar later, which will be slightly different days than the, um, school calendar.
Anything else, Shelley? Any questions for Shelley? All right, thank you.
Good evening. Um, spring activities are, uh, in full swing. Super appreciative of all the administration and, uh, all of our teachers and staff that help, uh, run all those activities. It's certainly not a one-man job. Um, a couple of things to highlight. District music contest is this weekend, April twenty-second, April twenty-third. Uh, that takes place at Plattview. Um, the music department's also going to have a pops concert on May twelfth. That'll be outside. Um, there will be fireworks and for everyone to know, those are not through our dollars. Those are a donation, um, for, uh, for the music department. So, uh, pretty cool deal for them. Um, baseball was conference runner-up last week. Boys golf, we're hosting a JV invite next week and their conference tournament's May second at Plattview. Um, the boys track team, uh, Wahoo invite champions last week, um, and the boys and girls will head over to the Platsman's for the conference meet on May third. So, if you guys have any questions for me at the.
Any questions for Roger?
Probably the second goal on your, you love baseball?
Yep.
Let's talk about that.
Okay. Um, we've been meeting, um, we met with Bishop Newman, Mr. Lavalley and I, a couple of weeks ago. Had been in communication, um, with Lincoln Lutheran, um, throughout the winter, um, about what the possibility of dissolving that co-op would be if Class C baseball had passed. Um, when we took action back last May to renew the co-op, we were working on information that we had at that time, um, and, and made the best decision for our kids and program, um, with no knowledge that Class C baseball could even be an opportunity. Um, so, so when the legislative process began in November, um, that's when that, that potential was out there. Um, according to, uh, the NSAA, Bylaw two thirteen point four, uh, you must fill a co-op as a two-year agreement. Um, in order to dissolve that co-op, you have to have all parties, um, in agreement. Um, and, uh, our meeting last week, we did not have a consensus in which we would be able to dissolve that co-op.
So like Luther wanted to leave, even if we wanted to stay together?
You'd have to have all three parties.
Agree?
Agree to dissolve that.
So the whole co-op would have to be solved?
Correct.
So even if we wanted to stay together, we all agree to dissolve the co-op?
Correct.
Okay, other questions for Roger? All right, thank you. Uh, Mark?
Good evening. Uh, spring testing is, is starting to take place up in the middle school this week. We'll start with testing language arts. Um, and it's just, the spring is, everybody in state is just extremely busy. We've got our eighth graders that were registered, uh, for high school classes, so they'll do, take, in a couple of weeks, they'll do what's called a move-down day where they'll get paired up with some freshmen and shadow them for, for a day. So Mr. Harris is getting that organized. And then we have the fifth graders that usually come up for what we call a move-up day and they'll come up and visit with all the sixth grade teachers and, uh, we'll talk about class routines and go get tours and they'll eat lunch and have some ice cream, which they really love. Uh, so they'll come up and get, and we'll get all those organized and we've got those days coming up. Um, I'd also like to thank the National Honor Society. I think I've already thanked them this year, but they've been a tremendous help to the middle school with, as we schedule times for them to come up, um, and visit and work with some of our middle school kids or maybe, I just need a little assistance on getting the work done. Uh, so I would, I'd like to thank them again because those students have been really, really good with coming up and working with our kids, so hopefully we can continue to do that.
Anything else, Mark? Questions for Mark? All right, thank you.
Uh, one more, I'm sorry, one more thing. I am going to talk, we're starting with, we're starting that we call a paramediation program that I'm going to talk about next month with you guys, so that'll be for next year, so forgot to mention that.
Okay. Josh?
You have my full report. A lot of consistent or continued items that continue to roll over month to month on my report, Ken, generally, but, um, as Mark mentioned, NSAS, our state assessments have begun at the elementary school where greater than ninety-seven percent complete in seventh grade levels. Uh, we have until the first week of May to complete those, so we're well on track to get everything completed in time. We have, uh, three students to make up ACT testing and, and we'll do that this week. Um, continued, uh, work with Hal, Mrs. Adams, has, has just continued to expand that program, so, uh, they, they're a group of elementary students practicing right now for Battle of Books competition that will be held at ESU three. Uh, continued, uh, with outreach into the community and Omaha, greater surrounding communities, so they, they've visited the Omaha Community Playhouse, got a tour behind the scenes on what's happening, um, with stage production and how to make the show run. They've been to New Space and Orpheum and Jocelyn and then also several quizable competitions at ESU three and then our Trailblazer Conference and then, and then a trip with some elementary and middle school students to Freeman Public Schools. Uh, a few other things not on the, uh, list, but May fourth, uh, are some elementary and middle school students will be heading to Lake Wahoo for the Spring Conservation Sensation. Uh, that's an annual event that, and, uh, Laura Plattnor then are the hosts and, uh, brings kits from all over the Greater Saunders County area, so it'll, it's a really kind of cool event and, um, the kids look forward to that. And then May tenth, uh, we've, uh, scheduled a Title One Parent Night, so that'll be held at Wahoo Elementary School. Uh, we were hoping to coordinate that with the pops concert, but it sounds like that maybe it's not on the tenth, uh, any longer, but I don't see any reason that we need to change, so. And then just recently, Mrs. Miller at the elementary school and I have been talking about, uh, using the, some of those Title One dollars to coordinate a kickstart program. So essentially, a week before school starts, uh, we would invite students who have already been participating in the Title One program to come back. We kind of start school early. Uh, it's, uh, an hour a day for, for each group of students, so their, their time commitment would be no more than an hour. Uh, we've already sent a survey out to those families about their feedback, they didn't go on whether they would be interested and, and the majority, uh, of families were very interested in, in that piece. So just very focused on reading and kind of getting kids back into their team a little bit earlier than the rest of the years, so.
Did, did you say you guys were searching for funding for that?
We have funding for that, yeah. So, um, depending upon our numbers, Mrs. Miller will coordinate and then we may be looking for some other staff members to help out run those groups, so. Uh, they'll be running the same program or a similar program at St. Wednesday's loss as well, so I've talked to Mrs. Tretner over there and they're, they're going to be doing something quite similar also. Um, also, kind of a, a positive, uh, I applied for a outdoor fund grant through Cabela's and Bass Pro Shops to support one of the Kids Summer Institute programs that we run, Mr. Burkin, myself and, uh, Nurse Tretner, every summer and, and was awarded a thousand-dollar grant for that. So, uh, took my youngest and we did a little, uh, shopping the other day. Uh, they were, they were, they were super excited to be participating with that and there's some things that I have to do in terms of like just general maintenance of funds and telling them what we spend the money on and, and taking pictures and whatnot, so. Uh, but a, a win for us and I think a win for the kids to participate in, so. And then later in the action items, uh, there's a couple of curriculum adoptions for consideration we can talk about.
All right, any questions for Josh? Thank you, Josh. Brandon?
Uh, yes, same thing, my report is there. Um, I guess a couple of highlights is, first time in a couple of years, we've had a, we had a, uh, a career fair. Southeast Community College hosted a career fair on the, on the twenty-ninth. Um, and, um, I think it went really well. It's one of those things we'd like to build on. We had some other schools come in. Our kids went through, I thought they did a good job of going through some technical things that programs in Southeast offer. It was, it, I, I feel like it was really well received and, and, uh, it was kind of, it, they, they called us about a week and a half before it went, so it was kind of a hurried, uh, organization to get it in there, but I thought it went really well and a lot of people, Mr. Harris, Mrs. Hawswall, um, our custodial staff really helped to get us to run that, and run that well. Um, for the second year in a row, our, um, music department has been named, uh, uh, our community has been named best community in music education, so I thought that was a real, that just came out this week, but that was a real positive thing. And then as we move forward, um, we've got prom coming up, so if you want to come and check prom out, it's, it's, it's there. Um, at Starlight on Saturday and after prom is, is in Omaha after that. And then we have, and then I listed the other things that are going on for seniors because that's coming up here in the next two and a half weeks. So last day for seniors is the fourth and, um, graduation practice is on the morning of the fifth and then we'll be ready to go, so. Questions?
Oh, questions for Brandon? All right, thank you, Brandon. Brandon?
All right, whole bunch of legislative stuff to talk about here. The UNICAM rules reserve one more day. I think it's going to be on Wednesday. Uh, that will be their final day of this session. Uh, they reserved that, uh, because they sent bills to the governor and there's still a little bit of fear that some of those might get vetoed by the governor. They want to have the ability to reconsider those before they, like, close the session. Uh, things that that would be looking at, LB eight eighty-eight, Holocaust genocide education. As part of history, history education, there was a push to include slavery in Native American history as part of that, but there was fear that that would get vetoed outright, so they went with eight eighty-eight on the Holocaust genocide this year with the idea of they would look at those other pieces next year. There'll be twelve eighteen certification student loans for teachers. It relaxed, relaxed some of the certification requirements, especially teachers with experience coming in, and also provided a little bit of funds to address student loans for teachers. It did not go so far as to eliminate, completely eliminate the exam piece for in-state teachers, which was really the push from the Education Committee. And, and again, something they will probably bring up again next year, just to get more people into the field, not make it so restrictive that we continue seeing teacher shortages. Eleven twelve, computer science technology education, that will be something that does impact us going forward. It's going to require computer science curriculum in the elementary and middle school and then require five credits in the high school, which is essentially a semester for our students. Uh, every graduate has to take that on. It could be, especially looking at like the middle school, it could be as simple as some curriculum adjustment in core areas that we try to integrate things and it could get as complex as having to hire extra staff members in order to address this need that is, we're going to wait and see how it's written, the final bill. Understand that that is, that is coming and those are some of the challenges that we've got to get figured out before it gets implemented. I think with the graduation piece, it's twenty-six, twenty-seven, is it twenty-four, twenty-five at the elementary? At the elementary middle school? Uh, LB eight fifty-two, behavioral health point of contact. Again, making mental health, behavioral health, uh, the emphasis here, just going to require all districts identify a point of contact coordination of services that are available in the community and in the area. We could do it and appoint somebody within our district as that person. The ESU has also reached out and said they would be willing to take that on and have a representative of the ESU coordinate the entire service unit area. So we'll see what fits best and we'll go from there. Other items, we still have one position open, that high school math. It'll bring out tax-certificated staff and classified employee shortages. It's the point we're at. We're, how long has that math position been open? A month? Six weeks. Six weeks. And we're still working to fill it. I know Brandon's been working hard at it. Got a couple potential options that we'll, we'll know more by the end of the week. Uh, another note, Tuesday, May tenth, we host District Track for the first time, uh, with the start time being before lunch and us needing the help, uh, it's going to be my recommendation that the high school, middle school not have class that day. The elementary will stay in session, but the middle school, high school students will not have class that day. Teachers will be here. They'll either be working in their classrooms or they'll be out working at the track meet. Uh, we, we've got to have people to be able to host this thing and we've got to be able to have the parking for it as well. Uh, even for like our invitational, we've got people parking in the way of buses at the elementary. We've got it on both sides of the street, even though it's not supposed to be. It just creates a little more space for essentially a state event. We're about done. Got about a month left. Things are going fast and furious. Uh, I know the administration's been working hard. The staff's been doing a great job, so very pleased with where we're at at this point. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Brandon? All right, Brandon? Uh, communications, I don't see anything. Audience comments? That was your opportunity if anybody wishes to say anything? Hearing none, we'll move on to the board committee reports. Anything there? All right, um, moving on to the action items, final day of school. Brandon?
Okay, I had shared this previously, um, we're, we're in good shape with our hours for students, instructional hours as required by Rule ten. Uh, as such, I'd recommend that final day for students this year be Thursday, May nineteenth. A lot of teachers coming back the following week on different days to fulfill some contract time, get us ready going into next year. Um, we're, we are where we need to be, so that would be my recommendation on that nineteen this semester.
Okay. Is there a motion to that affect? Motions are second? Motion is second, any discussion to make May nineteenth the final day for students?
So what happens if kids are not caught up late in time during that week? They're going to come and finish that?
Sure.
So that's.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, Chris, will you call the vote, please?
Laura, yes. Alex?
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes. Okay, next item is board representation of the twenty-twenty-two graduation, which is May eighth. Is that correct?
It is May eighth.
All right. Don't ever try to raise your hands at once.
Is there somebody else there?
Is there anybody that has anybody in particular? I went with the last two. Anyone else? Katie?
It's Mother's Day.
That's true. What, what date do you need to have that invite? What date do you have to have this?
For programs.
Uh, uh.
Tomorrow.
Twenty-ninth, I believe is the day. Is that a Friday?
We could get it to you by later this year?
Yeah, if I knew by the end of this week, yeah.
And it doesn't technically require board action, it's just a point that we're allowed to, so we do it next Monday.
What? I didn't hear what you said.
I said no eye contact.
No, as soon as it's off Mother's Day. It's like.
All right. We'll have it tuned. I'll take that. All right. Next item. Uh, Shelley, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Head Start calendar.
So Ally worked with ESU and the early childhood folks. We've got all the training set up for next year and then that calendar will reflect that. It includes a couple of religious missiles for that, so we are not required as many dates, but we do try to stay as close to that school age calendar as possible.
So we just need to.
Just need to.
Approve this?
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Saunders County Head Start on preschool calendar for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three as presented? Motion, I have a second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, Chris, would you call the vote, please?
Alex?
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Laura, yes.
Next item is the ELA curriculum purchase.
And yeah, this is something that we've been on, have been on the list, kind of a revolving door for the last few years. New ELA standards were approved last year. Generally during that time, we start to take a look at what we have, or what we're utilizing, and how that aligns with those standards. Through this process, there's...
Just for clarification, ELA, English-like...
The English-like. There is a team member from every grade level at the elementary school and then special education that participates in that process, so that started last spring. It's carried through this this school year as well. A few of the action, the actions, I guess, that the group went through our list and there with reviewing the language arts instructional shifts and the new standards and how those things align. We took site visits to fairly local school districts within our region to look at materials and how they were being implemented, so that we might have an idea of, you know, positives, and then also things for consideration in terms of scaling those, you know, what that might look like when we come back to Wahoo. So the general consensus of the team and the recommendation is that EL education, we would do a five-year purchase that would put us back in sync with the state, the new state standards adoption process where those come in. So we would not be having any weird overlaps of two extra years or short or short years. And myself and that, and those teacher leaders were the key people in the team. A lot of advice and advisement from Karen Zello at ESU2, who's the reading, I don't know, reading specialist, reading guru within our area. As far as the funding piece, all SIR money is reimbursable, so we will pay for it upfront, we'll apply through SIR, and then get that money back. As part of SIR III, 20% of what we're allocated must go towards advancement or recovery curriculum, and that amount is roughly $166,000. So we'll be able to do this and the math with desert dollars that'll come back to us.
What are the major changes or shifts?
We're gonna see, I would say, and Ben can help out here too if he wants, but we'll see a lot more cohesion in the early reading K2, early reading skills. Not to say that there was a lot of gaps there, but just having that consistency piece all the way through with one material set will take care of that. Another, I would say a bigger shift is that the materials are more aligned with knowledge building. So past material sets, you know, you might have poetry for a week, and then you read a fiction story for a week, and then you read a nonfiction story, and those things don't generally connect. These materials will build on something longer over time, and a lot of science will be embedded, a lot of social studies kind of concepts, so students will explore those readings. They'll still get the poetry and the fiction, those types of genres, but they'll be doing it through key areas in our, in the educational journey. You know, if you think about how students build from kindergarten through 12th grade, science and social studies and life science, and those things become super important as they get to middle school and high school. So those would be probably bigger changes, some of the bigger changes.
I was just gonna add to the, so like Josh kinda said, and then I'm gonna expand on that. So the newly updated ELA standards, much like the math ELA standard, or math standards that we adopted a few years ago, it's really complicated, and it's really, really hard, because it's not just changing the curriculum, like the materials that you're using, but it actually is a shift in how you actually teach. So it's really shifting your instruction. So I think it's just good probably for the board to know too, that especially for the elementary teachers who have, you know, like, okay, we all know COVID, that's hard, but then math, really hard, ELA, even harder, that these are lots of big gigantic waves that are kind of crashing over the elementary teachers, because they teach all content areas. So it is something that's really, really hard, not just in Wahoo, for other districts too, because they're going through the same thing right now, but it's, it is a significant reason that elementary staff are really, really stressed right now. So that's just something, I guess, for you to know and understand too, is that new standards used to mean like, okay, it's gonna shift around a little bit. Now there are giant shifts in instruction, so hopefully these will stay somewhat consistent over the next 14-year cycle, but we don't really know that. And so that's just kind of, I think that'll open the room for everybody that teaches elementary right now. And so I started talking with some teachers a couple weeks ago, and we'll meet with elementary teachers in PLC meetings this week to talk about what realistically can we take off plates, because there's too much on teacher's plates right now, but also there are a lot of things that have to stay on those plates, and that's not our reality. So we're gonna try and talk about how can we work on school improvement initiatives and work smarter, not harder, because this, this is important, this is moving in the right direction, but it's really difficult. Josh has done a good job of that.
We've been working with Karen too to really ramp up the support pieces and what that looks like. Onboarding with two days, we'll do two days in May, at the end of May there, rather than in the past, you know, we might have done that in the summertime, and then it's kind of getting missed, gone, maybe the staff all, all at the same time, so we'll start that in May. And then we have at least, at least two times per month support during the school year, where Karen will be coming in, and we'll be using those half-day early dismissal professional development days to focus specifically on that implementation. Really just trying to keep in mind, like Ben said, that that's, you know, gonna be a super important area, but also something that we need to, you know, keep in mind, like, by not adding more on top of those things that are already there. They will be just print materials, we do have an option for digital tools and things down the road if we want. The general consensus in the group with that is we've had enough screen time over the last few years, that just, that component, you know, picking up a book and reading that this is also a worthy, a worthy endeavor, so.
All right, is there a motion to approve the purchase of the ELA curriculum materials from open up resources in an amount not to exceed $145,100? So, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any discussion?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So you mentioned, did you mention that we, we have to adopt a new curriculum of some sort, is that right?
We, so our process, we don't have to do anything, we do have to have materials that when we say, when we adopt the state standards, our materials have to align, or the things that we're doing within the classroom needs to align with that. And right now, with the giant changes that have come, that Ben had talked about, those things are exceptionally hard, would have been exceptionally hard to do with the current materials we have. So we would have been talking about a complete overhaul of the materials, adding things, taking things away, possibly adding other pieces in that then kind of create this disjointedness, because you have two separate programs running at the same time. And then also, you know, when you're looking at a year down the road or two, now we're back kind of in the same spot where materials subscriptions run out, and then we have to start over again. The general feeling from the teachers that participated were, you know, in essence, let's just go with this. Both things would be exceptionally challenging, but let's go with this, so everyone can, it's starting on the same page at the same time.
And then I guess the point of, or I guess the purpose of my question is kind of what Ben said, adding more stressors to pretty difficult...
I know.
Were we adding too much, but if teachers were in favor, it's good.
And it would have been as much work to do the other thing likely as it would have been to do this, so we did consider that with that in mind. But like I said, the report, the report's very, was in favor of let's move forward, so.
All right, other questions? Chris, would you call the board, please?
Brad.
Yes.
Cora, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
All right, Josh, you're on a roll.
This is not, this isn't just an update, Arcade Free Math Materials. There were some accessibility changes that were made, so basically what that means is the materials that they will send us look better, they're easier to access for teachers, they're easier to access for students. There's some additional online tools that teachers will like them to utilize, but it's the same content, it's the same, it's the same materials that we've already purchased, it's just an updated version. So what this means is we are already under contract with this company. The updated materials, it gives us a little bit more, and it extends that, that piece will line up with our, the rest of our KDA math materials. So teachers have been really appreciative of those, and the change was very well received, because just how the, how the teacher manuals and the student manuals and things were organized were not so, had a very positive vibes before. You know, the content was very solid, now all of those things line up, so. And again, the funds here would come from those SIR fee, SIR three dollars as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the updated math curriculum materials in an amount not to exceed $16,100? Motion, is there a second? Motion is a second, any further discussion? Chris, would you call the board, please?
Alex.
Yes.
Renee. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Cora, yes.
All right, thank you, Josh. Brandon, the technology purchase.
Yeah, a couple of technology items to address here. We're gonna go in reverse order. The first is to update the business lab. Right now, we've got yearbook, and we've got our computer, and all of our computer, what can be considered computer science classes in the business lab. Those machines are, I wanna say it's like circa 2005, maybe? Whatever it is, we can't run the updates necessary to run the yearbook program to do some of the stuff that we need to do in those classes. They're the old IMACs, which we could purchase now, but instead of doing the IMAC, we're gonna do a Mac Mini drive and a separate monitor, which comes in probably four or $500 cheaper than what it would be to buy the all-inclusive IMAC. It gives us some flexibility if we remove things around, if those machines need to be somewhere else. It fits the needs of that program, but again, allows us a little bit of flexibility. The amount for 25 would be $33,225. Then additionally, a second motion here would be to upgrade the MacBook Air laptops, 912 students, we're on a regular rotation with this, this is our year to consider. There you have the gross cost, Vicky did some work, and we do have some funds coming in that will offset the cost of that. About 40% roughly is going to be offset, so 60% of that is district responsibility, 40% will be, we'll call it grant funds.
How many MacBook Air laptops does that get in, like those there?
It's a four to five-year cycle, is what we're on, depending on updates, depending on how many are still in good use, depending on how many kids that we grow, because we try to buy extras to have for a kid moving in, for something that needs sent out for repairs. Sometimes we run out of machines, quite frankly. Off the top of my head, I don't know. I have it in email that I can find for you tonight.
And what happens to the existing ones?
They will be cycled down to the elementary's board cards, those that are usable, those that are not.
And our 60% share of that 352?
No, that's 352 is the gross. Our share of that is 60% of that number.
Okay. All right, is there, do you want these in two separate motions?
Yes, please.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the MacBook Air laptops for students grade 912, amount not to exceed 352? Be, now get a motion, and then there would be the understanding that 40% of that would be made with $30,000, and I had to talk about 60% of the district responsibility.
The only thing I'm not positive on is if that's reimbursable, or if that's an upfront money, that's why I'm putting a motion in that way.
Is there a motion, is there a second? Motion is a second, any other questions or discussion? All right, Chris, would you call the board, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Cora, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
And is there a motion to approve the purchase of the Mac Mini drives and monitors for the business lab in an amount not to exceed 33,225? Motion is a second, any further questions or discussion?
Real quick, I can't. The reason that we don't double up and just say we'll use the laptops as part of that is because there's licenses that go into that. With the middle school that goes down for classes, you would put licenses on individual machines, and then turn around and have to purchase new license for individual machines. Same thing with our computer science, they kind of run semesters at a time, and we would have to put licenses for anybody that's registered to class, or potentially buy additional licenses. Here it's just 25, whoever uses that machine is now.
All right. Chris, would you call the board, please?
Alex.
Yes.
Renee, yes. Rob.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Cora, yes.
All right. The last item on our agenda, personnel resignations and hirings, we've got a bubble over here.
I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna let the principals talk about how this all fits together. The resignations from Kim Thrasher, Stacy Griffiths, Liz Gregg. Kim Thrasher, she moved to Texas, taking her job. Stacy Griffiths, her mom has decided she wants to stay at home. Liz Gregg is taking a different job. With the hirings, Ben mentioned those already on the sheet, he knows where he's got, he got questions there.
Okay.
Ben, anything to add?
Not, has anybody had any questions?
So there was one that mentioned it as a, the absence person.
Liz Gregg?
Potentially, and that's up to you guys to consider, in my opinion. I don't think that fits, where a new job in the same field has been accepted. What the board has done historically is they have honor days of absences, but it's to go off and use some way, no way from education, to potentially come back. That would be up for you guys to consider. That's how I interpret it, based on past action.
Wow, that was worth rehiring, huh?
Absolutely, that was worth rehiring. We have someone come over and she applied.
That's not just going as far as the replacement, like, that was some 35. I'm sorry, if you understand the difference between that, the guarantee of return position, if she was granted an absence, what does that mean?
Believe it, what has been done in the past would be one year basically sabbatical to go do something else with a position guaranteed back under that one.
The same position guaranteed back, or a position guaranteed back?
The one that I'm aware of, it's the only position in the district that would be that way, so she was eligible to come back, but she elected not to come back at that time.
I can think of two since I've been on the board. One was a, one was one that he just referenced, and one was a health issue in military, military is if you can still go out. But one was a health issue, and we left a position available if they would have wanted to come back, but they were, they chose not to after that. And then the other one was to explore another opportunity, and then I don't, I don't think they came back and were able to. So those would have been guaranteed to come back in the same position.
Hire a teacher.
Yeah.
That wasn't the option yet.
All right, so we have three resignations that we need to deal with, that we need to approve, the regrets, is there a motion to that effect? Kim Thrasher, Liz Gregg, and Stacy Griffiths. Okay, that's a motion, is there a second? Motion is a second, any further conversation?
Let's just clarify on Liz Gregg, because are we considering, or are we unwilling to consider that as a name of absence? Is that what we're saying? We accept the resignation, we will not accept the name of absence?
I guess my concern with that is when competitive, like, you know, say we have attracted a, you know, a highly qualified candidate for a position of that nature, or they're interested in a position, it's a one-year contract. Does that change the hiring?
They're not, well, yeah, absolutely, because they're not, they're not a new standing position here. Yeah, but...
A teacher is a qualified candidate?
But also on the flip side is, Kim Thrasher, you know why, Stacy Griffiths, Liz Gregg, for me, it's one of the best teachers I've ever been around in this district.
I'm not questioning her.
And so if somebody like her approaches with that, I have a hard time accommodating somebody like her with that. I don't know what the protocol is. I'm just telling you, as I told Rob before, me, I'm voting no to accept her. I'm just telling you, as I told Rob before, I'm voting no to accept her resignation. I know it's ceremonial, but that's how, how much it, it has affected me because I know how good she is.
I don't think they know that.
So that's just, that's just me. But we hired the new staff based on not physically backing. So that would be, that'd be something that's not, be tough to change because that person had no idea.
And none of the offers were made on that basis, correct?
The letter requesting a one-year leave of absence was submitted on Sunday and it wasn't discussed with me or Brandon or Mr. LaValle, we attacked the person twice each. So I, I haven't talked to her about it. I agree, I love that. I wish she would have absolutely rolled it for. But also, no, we have a fair amount of them on a regular basis and we're going to district positions. So I think, I believe that they're in a good standing and they have the opportunity to come back again and we would have considered it, so. Yeah, I just hope we're, we're doing our part, having exit conversations with her, with whoever else and making sure we're, what, we had our own reason, I don't, that is not my, I read her letter, so. But I just like to make sure we're open to her having a conversation, honest conversation with her. Because she's, by the way, it's, it's been hard on my family and a lot, a lot of other people too. Because I heard about late, it was tough. So we'll return my call, it must be a reason why.
Alright, we have a motion of second for accepting the three resignations with regrets. Any other conversation? Chris, would you call the board please?
Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee, I don't know. Rob.
Yes.
You have to stay.
No.
Is that what it means? Brett.
Yes. I'm just imagining what happens if that vote fails. Sorry, I'm not lying.
Alright, and then we have a number of hires, is there any other questions in regards to any of those? I think Ben addressed them all previously, Landon Schmidt, Andrea Parsons, Jamie's calling, KB's and Sherri Anderson. I have a question, Mike, Mike mentioned, two of these are non-certified in the area in which they're gonna be teaching, correct?
The new hires.
What?
Parsons.
Or, okay, one of them.
She, right now she is provisional, but she's going back to her certificate.
Got it, got it. So, and I'm fine with that. My question is, is there a certain percentage of teachers that have to be in their licensed area? Or can you theoretically, two dozen teachers that would be in middle school, elementary, that would be out?
No, there's a certain percentage you have to have in their certificate areas, like, I wanna say high school is ninety percent, I think.
That's correct.
For, for rule ten purposes. I don't know the elementary off the top of my head, Josh or Ben, do you know that number exactly? So, so we have some flexibility there. That works well.
Got it. And then they have requirement, to this situation within three years.
Right. So like in high school typically you're, it's a, for example, it's a business teacher taking a PE class for weights. That would be teaching outside your certificate area, he doesn't have to pick up the provisional to do that, it just counts as part of that ninety percent. On the elementary side, there, if you're in a provisional position, you have to be taking classes towards that permanent certification.
Is the reason that we need to be hiring provisionals because of lack of applicants? So that we just have no other options?
So within Nebraska, there's a shortage for special education teachers, speech paths. We're very fortunate that we only have one on a provisional. When we have our state calls, that is a topic of conversation every month. And there are lots and lots of districts that have several, several special education teachers that are not indoors, so.
Ben, show how that works, maybe they shadow buy something that is, or they are.
So they have to enroll, they have.
I can't await, like a business teacher moving one thing, because this is a very specialized, very high.
And so, like for example with Andrea, she has worked in special education for many years as a parent. But there will be things that she doesn't know, like how to use our paperwork system and just even knowing what paperwork to do. But she'll be matched with a special education teacher as a mentor and then myself.
I just want to make sure there's no liability that we can expose ourselves to if something happens.
Yeah.
So we're, we're fine, there's nothing, she'd be protected, we'd be protected. But I suspect that her prior history as an employee of one public school was also listed in her recommendation.
Yeah, yeah. I always say, you know, like, and I can teach her how to do a lot of the things, but knowing who she is and how she works with kids, that to me is something that's.
Alright, is there a motion and a second for the approval of the five listed hires? Some of them. Motion is a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Chris, would you call the board please?
Mike.
Yes.
Brett. Laura, yes. Alex.
Yes.
Renee. Rob.
Yes.
Okay, facility project update, we have a meeting next Monday specifically dedicated for that. Okay, and items for the next regular meeting? I'm guessing hiring a few of a math teacher. Personnel. Anything else? Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
What's that? Next Monday. Next. Yep. A week from tonight, six o'clock.
Your motion to adjourn. Some of them. A second, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, we are adjourned.
Thanks, Mike.